Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting, February 14th, 2024. Welcome to all of you. We're glad that you're here. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Monsignor Perry, Cavukian pastor of St. Elizabeth Anne Seaton Catholic Church, to offer the invocation. He's beloved and known for his humor and compassion, and under the Monsignor's leadership, the parish has grown to approximately 4,000 families. St. Elizabeth Anne Seaton is the first parish in the diocese in 40 years, and its blessing bag has helped so many in our unsheltered community. We're very, very grateful. And following that, we'll have the invocation. I just want to make sure that Daniela is not in the audience. Don't see her, so in which case, Councilmember Weir will offer the invocation. Would you all please stand? I mean, the flag salute, sorry.
Thank you so much for the invitation to offer the invocation this evening. This is not only Valentine's Day, but it's also the beginning of Lent, Ash Wednesday, for many Christians throughout the community who are beginning the 40-day period of preparation for Easter. So lots of exciting things happening today. Let us pray. Father and God of all people, we ask your blessing on these your servants, our mayor and city council members, and all who have been called and chosen to lead our community in which we live and work and play. Guide their discussions this evening. Give them the wisdom and courage to do what is right and good and just for all the residents of our city. Be with all of us who call Bakersfield home. Help us to care for one another, regardless of our politics, religiosity, ethnicity, or walk of life. Help us to find ways of alleviating the burden that many people carry, the homeless, the poor, the immigrant, the unemployed, the incarcerated, the sick, and the elderly. Give us a generous heart, so that we may respond with love to those who live on the margins, those who are alone, and those who are forgotten. We thank you for our diverse community, farmers, businesspeople, first responders, corporate workers, healthcare providers, religious leaders, teachers, and all who work hard for a living, thus contributing to the well-being of our city. And on this Valentine's Day, Father, grant us a healthy dose of love for each other, so that we may demonstrate the true heart and spirit of our city. We ask this in the name of Jesus, your Son, who is our Lord and brother. Amen.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Monsignor, thank you so much. You're welcome to stay, or if you need to leave, we certainly understand that. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council cannot take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one public speaker card for items listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Jose Rangel regarding item 6A.
Welcome.
Hi. Wow, nervous, a lot of people. Jose Rangel, seeking to speak on item agenda 6A. I was looking to also say something else, but I don't think time will allow it upon my non-agenda-listed item. I don't allow those in attendance their opportunity to speak. So I will merge what I have to say into this. I'm being considered for the vacancy on Ward 2. Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, the alternate vacancy. And I just wanted to say a few things. There's an old saying out there. They say, "Time will justify a man who means to do right." But who's to justify what is right and what is wrong? The judge? You know more human than you or me. The jury? Hell, the jury couldn't spell legislation by themselves, even if you wrote it out for them. So again, I ask, what constitutes right? What constitutes wrong? Consensus. A consensus that establishes that my neighbors out in Seven Oaks are no better than my neighbors out in Sumner. A consensus that establishes that my neighbors out on Mount Vernon Avenue are no worse than my neighbors down at the Stockdale Country Club. We're all just merely playing the hand we were dealt. But as of late, I'm under the impression that it's time to shuffle the deck. Bakersfield used to be Kern Island. This used to be Alfalfa Field. It used to be a place you could leave your horses to graze. It was a place no visitor went hungry. Miss Helen Baker wouldn't allow it, not in 100 years. This September marks 100 years since her passing. I'm sorry, but may I have 30 more seconds?
Go ahead and finish. You have about five more seconds.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um.
Go ahead and bring your comments to a close, please.
Thank you. Allow me to again myself. My eyes are sometimes too big for my plate, but I never bite off more than I can chew. I envision greatness. I envision prosperity. I envision understanding. I envision the unity, growth, and development of my community and communities surrounding.
Thank you, Ms. Rangel.
May I have 20 more seconds?
We have finished two minutes, and I've gone over two minutes.
I understand.
So that would be the end.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any others related to the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have no other speakers relating to agenda items.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received 19 public speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. I will call the first three speakers.
Yes, go ahead. And so she's going to call them, just so you can be ready for your turn, so we can move through quickly. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, please.
Oscar Iniego, Lorena Salinas, Mildred Gonzalez.
Thank you. And just a reminder, when you come up here, just adjust the microphone, so that we can hear you either raise or lower it. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Oscar Iniego. I come in to, over here to see what's going on. Mr. Gonzalez, I feel that you still remember you over phone calls that we had two years ago, on the agenda of having sidewalks and so forth put around the area on Ward 3. So I don't know whether I should direct my question to Mr. Weir of what's going on with our area over there that I was told at one time that we're going to have sidewalks put in, and to this date, nothing has happened. So I'd like an explanation of what's going on. I know it's a budget thing, money, whatever, but it keeps on getting diverted somewhere else. I feel real strongly that if our area gets a little bit improvement, maybe people will improve their homes and so forth like that. But yet, there's nothing coming out from anybody, whether it's the city, however that works, I don't know. But again, I'm here for that reason, is to find an explanation of why our part of the area is not getting any type of attention, being sidewalks, road maintenance, and so forth. And I addressed Mr. Gonzalez one time that there's a safety issue over there, kids walking on the street when there's vehicles passing at a monit fast way, and nobody's doing nothing about it. It's a safety issue. There's people on wheelchairs, because there's no sidewalks, they're going on the street also. So, being said, I'd like to know why we're getting pushed aside and not nothing happening to Ward 3 and our area. Could somebody please explain that to me?
Thank you, Mr. Iniego. We have requests from the Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir, for being here this evening. Because of redistricting, this is no longer a part of my ward, but I had been working on it, and Mr. Stracklous and Public Works team had been working on, I believe, a design for Homemaker Park. And we're, I believe it was working, we were working through a CDBG funding. I'm sorry? What was the exact intersection? It was off of Q and...
28th.
28th.
Yes, 28th Street.
Yeah, so we are working on the funding source in order for us to progress with the project. Mr. Clegg, did you have an update?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. We typically fund large-scale areas that don't have curb gutter and sidewalk through our Community Development Block Program. It is unfortunate that we have many areas of the historic neighborhoods in the city that, or areas that have been annexed in from the county that don't have curb gutter and sidewalk. So we've had a long list of those type of projects, but we did get the 28th Street area in queue, and it is actually in this current CDBG action plan to do curb gutter and sidewalk in that area this cycle. It took a couple of cycles to get to that project, but it is funded.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you. I don't have anything further to add to that or ask about it, but could you keep me updated on the progress in that area? And we'll see if we can get that completed for you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir, and thank you. Your time is up, and staff will follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Lorena Salinas, followed by Mildred Gonzalez, followed by Adela.
So if you're in the middle, and she's already called your name, if you could move somewhere where you can get up quickly, please. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello, City Council. My name is Lorena Salinas. In the 21 days since the last City Council meeting, the ICJ has determined that there is clear evidence of genocide being conducted by Israel against the people of Palestine. They have listed the war crimes and ordered Israel to stop all actions that would lead to the deaths of any more Palestinians. Also, in those 21 days, Israel has ignored the orders of the International Court of Justice and continued to massacre civilians in a full-scale attack against Rafa that is reminiscent of the Nazi Final Solution, bringing the total number of deaths up to over 30,000. That is over 30,000 human lives that have been completely erased, some of those being relatives of community members that we have here. With blatant disregard for international law and humanity, Israel is also blocking humanitarian aid from reaching the displaced refugees and has increased the severity of their brutality with impunity. Under the ICJ ruling, these are deliberate acts of genocide, and anyone who contributes to this genocide should be held equally accountable. By allowing our tax dollars and resources to be used to fund this genocide, you are all complicit. By saying I stand with Israel, like Mayor Karen Go has stated, you stand with genocide. You stand for infants being murdered. You stand for civilians being shot while in line waiting to receive humanitarian aid. You stand for an entire culture and people being erased for the sake of profit. My fellow community members of Bakersfield and High are here to say that we do not stand for this, and we do not consent to our hard-earned money being used to fund this war machine. We call on you to pass an immediate ceasefire resolution, to stand with your community, and to send a message to our state and federal governments to end all contributions to the senseless killing. Now is your chance to really show what values you uphold and what kind of people you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas. Just a reminder to the audience that this is not a forum where we can have noise interrupting the speaker, so I'm just going to ask you not to disrupt the meeting, please. Next speaker, please.
Mildred Gonzalez, followed by Adela, followed by Gassan Kay.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, thank you. I'm here today to address you with a heavy heart, concerned about the dire situation in the Gaza Strip and Palestine. For too long, their voices have been silenced by oppression and violence. It is our moral duty to amplify their voices and demand an end to their plight. In the besieged Gaza Strip, over 2 million Palestinians, including innocent children, women, and the elderly, suffer from poverty, unemployment, and malnutrition. The Israeli blockade, now in the 15th year, has devastated their economy, turning Gaza into an open-air prison. Hospitals lack supplies, clean water is scarce, and electricity is limited. The consequences are devastating. The humanitarian crisis in Gaza worsens due to excessive use by force by the Israeli military, resulting in countless civilian casualties, including innocent children. Schools, hospitals, and residential areas have been targeted, leaving destruction and despair behind. The situation in the occupied West Bank is equally dire, with systematic discrimination, arbitrary arrests, and land confiscation. The illegal construction of the Israeli settlements violates international law and undermines peace prospects. We cannot remain silent. We must condemn the Israeli occupation and demand a ceasefire. Let's offer vital humanitarian assistance to Gaza and Palestine, aiding them in rebuilding their lives and communities. Their struggle is our struggle for justice, equality, and self-determination. Together, we stand in solidarity, demanding an end to their suffering. Let us make, let us make it clear to the world that we won't tolerate the continued occupation and oppression of the Palestinian people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Next speaker, please.
Adela, followed by Gassan, followed by Sophia Galvan.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Adela, and I'm 12 years old. I am here in support of a ceasefire in Gaza, because as a 12-year-old, I am hearing about kids my age and younger getting killed in front of their families than their families getting killed right next to them. I was raised by my parents and my family all around me, talking about how I should always have a voice on the topics I believe in, and to speak for the children that can't use their voice, or some that are too scared to speak up. And I want people to know that what is happening in the world right now is not okay. And if we want change, we have to use our voices for a change. And I don't want to, I don't want to grow up in a world where there is no, where there is no peace, and people keep getting hurt. And I want to see kids have the same freedom that I do right now. I was nervous to come here today, because I know this pop, this topic is unpopular to the city council members, and they think this topic is too big of an issue to change. But because of the many history lessons my teacher has taught me, what my family has taught me, I know that, I know that change doesn't happen from staying silent. So I came here today to be brave and speak of my opinion of the kind, of the kind of world I want to live in, because, because the decisions, because of the, the decisions of our world leaders affects my future. In conclusion, I am here to encourage City Council to vote for a ceasefire, because my future depends on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your bravery. It's not easy to speak in front of an audience, and thank you for speaking. Next speaker, please.
Gassan Kay, followed by Sophia Galvan, followed by Carter Beardsley.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. My name is Gassan Kanafani, and I join you guys here today as a Palestinian constituent of Bakersfield, raised between Bakersfield and Palestine. From my earliest years here, I've experienced hostility at every turn, from racist teachers and faculty who openly denigrate me in front of my peers, fellow students and peers, to law enforcement showing up at my doorstep for speaking openly about my experiences in Palestine, to harassment in this very city by people who have served with the Israeli Defense Forces and the occupation of my people, to having a mayor who wasted no time, less than 48 hours, in issuing a statement standing with the people of Israel following October 7th. Yet, after five months of a brutal, wanton, remorseless genocide that has seen over 35,000 slaughtered, has yet to find it within herself to so much as issue a moment of lip service in support of her very own Palestinian community, a community that includes Palestinian families such as my own, who have fled the violence and depravity of Israel's decade-long occupation, ethnic cleansing, and colonization of our lands, doctors, lawyers, business, business leaders, and people from every walk of life, who continue to exist and contribute to a city that had yet to ever, in its history, acknowledge our very existence. Vice Mayor Andre Gonzalez, when asked about a ceasefire resolution, you did what you do best and deflected, claiming that there's nothing much we can do at the City Council's office, unable to even feign concern for Palestinians in your own district and ward who are hurting and losing more friends and family day after day. You say you have no sway in international issues, that it's a job of Congress, but what have you yourself done? If you care for the Bakersfield community nearly as much as you claim to, what have you done? Who have you spoken to in order to try to keep our taxes that taxpayers pay here within Bakersfield, rather than being sent abroad to fund a war machine? What have you done to reach out to the Palestinians here in your city, who are in a perpetual state of shock, mourning, and grief, as we see the corpses of our loved ones on TV and social media day after day? You say we need to focus on our community here, and that's precisely what we're here to do today. We're here to be the voice of the Palestinian community that you have all ignored for far too long, and we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that you can no longer ignore us. We call on you to do the absolute bare minimum and introduce a ceasefire resolution to stand with the Palestinians of Bakersfield.
Your time is up. Go ahead and bring your comments to a close, please. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sophia Galvan, followed by Carter Beardsley, followed by Karen Olson Johnson.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. Hi, my name is Sophia Galvan. I'm here because a genocide is being livestreamed to our phones. People ask, "How could the Holocaust happen?" It's because of the people that tolerated the crimes. The Holocaust happened because of millions of individual choices. The people of Palestine are asking for our help. They are asking to be seen as humans. An acronym used by aid workers in Gaza is WCNSF, Wounded Child No Surviving Family. Let me describe some images that I have personally seen, in case you are oblivious to the suffering. Designated safe areas are being bombed. Civilians waving white flags are being shot and killed by snipers. Strangers helping to dig people out of the rubble. Babies freezing to death, limbs being amputated without anesthesia, C-sections being performed with no anesthesia, an 11-year-old girl shot by a sniper, children's bodies shaking from trauma exposure. People trying to get aid are shot at by the occupation. Babies born in a genocide and dying in a genocide. Weaponized, starvation, children so severely burned that they die from their wounds, babies left to die alone in besieged hospitals, hospitals bombed with doctors and patients inside, people getting kidnapped, stripped, beat, and tagged with a number, babies screaming for their dead mother. Whole families bombed and buried under the rubble. Animal feed ground into flour for human consumption, a child picking up body parts of his family member and putting them into a grocery bag, a father holding his, a grandfather holding his lifeless granddaughter, opening her eyes to see them for the last time, a mother refusing to leave the dead body of her son and carries him from Khan Yunis to Rafa. A six-year-old trapped in her vehicle with her, surrounded by her dead relatives, was martyred, along with two paramedics trying to rescue her. A 12-year-old girl hanging by her shirt with half of her body intact. What body part would you choose to write your child's name on, in case they get blown to pieces? What if it was happening to your loved ones? Will you call for a ceasefire resolution and be on the right side of history?
Thank you, Ms. Galvan. Next speaker, please.
Carter Beardsley, followed by Karen Olson Johnson, followed by Kevin Moreno.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carter Beardsley, and I sit on the Bakersfield Youth Commission, representing Ward 4. The last time that I was here speaking to you all, it was on the presentation, it was a presentation of some of the hopes that I had for the future of our youth commission. I spoke about how, over the past few years, there were certain aspects of the commission that I found that I were, I was eager to see develop, and I wanted to speak to you guys tonight to update you. First and foremost, we now meet here in council chambers, which may seem minor, but the upgrade from Conference Room A across the street at City Hall North, as I feel, filled us with so much more purpose. Being seated at the dais spoke to me that my voice matters, and that the work we do, that we will continue to do from here on out is valuable. While here, a fellow commissioner and I also spoke about a bridge we'd like to see between commissioners and their council counterparts. And since then, I've met multiple times with my own counterpart, Councilmember Smith, and have been very grateful to provide that youth perspective into life in Bakersfield. Lastly, we came here previously requesting a budget for our commission. For the past few years, we've had no budget to work with, forcing us to collaborate with pre-existing organizations, rather than standing on our own two feet. I'm excited to say that the next time that you see me here, I will be joined by the other commissioners, with some of the other commissioners, presenting a budget proposal we've been working on very hard, per Count Vice Mayor Gonzalez's request. I wanted to speak on this tonight, both as an update and as a thank you. Your guys' support for our youth commission is deeply appreciated, and it serves as a personal reminder to me that just because we are the future does not mean we do not have a place in the present. I'm hopeful that the youth commission will soar to heights greater than I can imagine, and thank you.
Thank you for the update, and thank you for your service on the commission. Next speaker, please.
Karen Olson Johnson, followed by Kevin Moreno, followed by Zachary Griffin.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Karen Olson Johnson. I read an article in the Bakersfield Californian about Vice Mayor Andre Gonzalez's interest in revitalizing the train depot and the Baker Street, Sumner Street area of our town. The article referred to a company called LAB in Costa Mesa that worked on the Packing House project in Anaheim. In May, I was at the Anaheim California Dental Association annual meeting, and I dropped by that old packing house, as I have done from time to time. What had been in disrepair and languishing for decades was flourishing. That is special to me, because Anaheim is the town I rode the horse in through all the years. orange groves when they used to be there. The town has grown up around the packing house on all sides with a huge commercial district, business, apartments, ice rink, walking districts. But the packing house was ignored. But that particular company transformed that small parcel of land that has a raised loading dock for the citrus to be loaded, for food vendors at that for the packing house to do brisk business. Local artisans had their own spaces to provide business, and it has become a destination spot in Anaheim and advertised in their hotels.
Ms. Johnson, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
With councilmen's and the council's assistance, we have a classic train station. We have space. We have loved restaurants, and we have apartments and buildings available. We can develop that into something really exciting, and I'd appreciate your work on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Kevin Moreno, followed by Zachary Griffin, followed by Mr. Jones.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, council. I'm Kevin Moreno, and I want to start with the fact that I've lived in Bakersfield my whole life. I've seen much of what the city has to offer, whether it's its inadequate public transit, its poor infrastructure, its labor rights violations, the environmentally unsustainable suburban development, the police brutality, the sexism, the homophobia, the xenophobia, and racism. That's a lot, right? I wondered how my city could harbor such traits, but I needed to look no further than when I saw Karen goes and Andre Gonzalez's, not just their support, but their indifference towards genocide. Because it sure as hell makes sense that you can let us, the people, your citizens, suffer these conditions while you support a colonizer project that displaces, murders, and imprisons innocent women, men, and children. Your refusal to stand for humanity and agree to a simple ceasefire resolution, one that has been handed to you, is disgusting and dishonorable, and it puts this whole council to shame. And in the end, it tells how this council isn't actually here for us. I see it in the way you run this city. Because a lot of you make the point that you want to focus on improving this community, but you would rather spend over 40% of the budget on police, whereas public works, parks and rec, and community development combined receive no more than a generous 35. So sure, throw crumbs at us, but we know you would rather expand a system that kills, starves, and freezes its disadvantage than help and improve this community. You'd rather see this community be policed than improved. So even if we can't do it literally, it will be through our gatherings, our actions, and our stories, our accounts of history, that we will charge you with genocide. And I stand with the free Palestine and for the liberation of all those that are oppressed, and I know that many of my constituents, whether here or not, agree with me.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. Mr. Moreno. Just a reminder to the audience that the snapping is disrupting our meeting, and we're here to listen to you. We want to hear your comments, but we need to be able to listen to them. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Zachary Griffin, followed by Mr. Jones, followed by Jose Rangel.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, councilmembers, community. Hats off to all the young people out here. Love to see them coming up and expressing their opinions. I'm here today to follow up on some business. I was before this council a couple of months ago, discussing an issue in Mr. Ware's community in regards to some of the streetscape. We were not maybe thinking completely about our complete streets philosophy, and we didn't sort of think about how we were going to get cyclists moved from one area to another on Manor with the help of staff, Councilman Smith, Mr. Arias as well. We were able to get this solved, and it was, I'm 54 years old. I hate to say it. I know I'm young for some and old to others. But I was very pleased, and as we've heard here from some of our constituents here, sometimes when we're younger, we don't see the change. And I echo their frustrations. However, I want to give the city kudos for getting this done. I did have a sort of a supplemental question because I kind of stumbled in this as someone sent me an email this morning. Apparently, there's an ad hoc committee for bicycle and pedestrian, multimodal transportation. And looking at the committee, as much as I appreciate the people who are on that committee, I didn't see an educator, an individual who'd spent their life engaging in that. And so I wanted to encourage, I myself have signed up to be a part of getting the emails. I saw that we had a meeting yesterday evening, and I didn't really, I think the meeting agenda went out at 2:30 on Friday. Being that we, most of us had Monday off, it seemed to be really pushing the 72 hours, probably within two and a half hours of letting us know so that we could be a voice, so we can sort of not continue that imagery of maybe not listening to our constituencies. And I also wanted to, with my last 15 seconds, what a great weekend for active transportation. Had the corridor going on, about 2,000 people, I guess, on the corridor, and Mr. Sam Ames, a local promoter, had the 11th annual, that's the 11th straight year of what they call the rock cobbler, and I think there are 1,800 people out here using our community services.
Ms. Griffin, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close?
And what a wonderful opportunity. Thank you, guys, and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin, and Councilmember Arias, please.
Yep, thank you, mayor. Mr. Griffin, I just want to say you are more than welcome to come and join us at our meetings. I know that, I don't think Gary's in the House, but from the city manager's office, he helps run those meetings with us. We make them available to the public after 5:00 because we know people work jobs, and we are happy to hear your comments.
Awesome. On the website, it does have that they're on noon. They're going to be at noon, and they're going to be monthly. And from what I understand, they're going to be at 5:00. And so, signed up to get those updates. So thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Ware.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mayor Go, I just wanted to point out that we only have a minute remaining on the clock. Our next speaker is Mr. Jones, followed by Scott Michael, followed by Jose Rangel.
Thank you. And if you want to try to expedite your comments to allow more people, we have a minute left on the clock, so go ahead and introduce yourself and welcome.
Hi there. My name is Gabriel Jones. I am a resident of Bakersfield. You seem to not believe that the genocide in Gaza affects people in Bakersfield. For evidence of this, that it actually does truly affect the citizens of Bakersfield, I'll have you reference the Washington Post article from November 27th, where they posted the fact that more than 10,000 people living in the United States recently left to join the IDF. Those people are coming back here. They're going to be in our communities, and I want you to push forward a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza now. But on top of that, too, I need you to put forward a resolution to guarantee all of us that you will not hire any police officers that have had any association with the Israeli occupation forces. I'll see you in my time there.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Scott Michael.
Mr. Michael, you have nine seconds left, so if you can just use that time wisely, please, welcome.
We were supposed to be given 20 minutes.
We already, you can see the clock up there. We're already at negative four.
Since October 7th, I'm going to keep it short, just for the people behind me. Since October 7th, for 131 continuous days, the children of Gaza, the fathers of Gaza, and the mothers of Gaza continue proving to the world that Palestinians will never be defeated. They continue proving to everyone in the world that Palestinians would rather die standing resolutely against the terrorist occupying diaper forces of Israel and its big sister, the US, and then to give up and lose our cause. Palestinians will continue mobilizing around the world, and we will never be defeated. Never. And as Palestinians are remembered for their resistance, courage, and bravery, you city council members who refuse to call for a ceasefire resolution will be remembered for cowardice. Pass a ceasefire resolution in free Palestine from the river to the sea.
Thank you. And Madam City Clerk, with that, the time of 20 minutes. Yes.
I have a request to speak. It's to your left.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, just let me confirm with City Clerk. Time is up, correct?
I'd like to request that we extend time to allow for everyone who's here to make public comment be afforded the opportunity to speak. It is a right. This is a public space. It is a right to have the freedom of speech, and I would like to make a motion to extend the time.
Madam City Attorney.
Mayor, no motion is needed. This prerogative falls completely within your call.
So, right now, we have three more speakers left. We'll give you two minutes each, and just appreciate your staying within your two minutes.
Thank you.
This is not typical. And we just ask the audience to observe the rules of decorum. Would you please call the first public speaker, the next one, please?
Jose Rangel, followed by Bisan, followed by Samir Abu Daga, followed by Ridi Patel.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
On time, no see. Jose Rangel. Jose Angel. Just reiterate, just refresh. I envisioned what Colonel Thomas Baker did when he came here with Elijah Stevens down the Kern. I envisioned the Metropolis he envisioned. He died before the railroads even came, but he was about a couple of years, more than a couple of years ahead of his time. Typhoid got him, rest in peace. But I'm a man of reason, and reason compels me to believe that none of what I envision is possible unless the consensus is reached and certain attitudes no longer remain unchecked. Remember whose town this is. And remember who we do it for. God bless America, and God bless this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. Next speaker, please. Madam Clerk, can you announce next?
Bisan, followed by Samir Abu Daga, followed by Ridi Patel.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Bisan Auda, and I hope to speak to your conscience today, if you have one. I'm standing in front of all of you as a war survivor. I cannot stay silent as the Palestinians go through an even more agonizing and aggressive experience, a literal genocide. And you shouldn't stay silent either. You have seen on your screens and heard from the previous speakers before me the awful atrocities Israel is committing against the Palestinians and the horrifying and unlivable situation they're in. Early on, Israel forced 1.9 million Palestinians and Gazza to evacuate from the north to the south for their so-called safety, where 1.5 million ended up in the small city of Rafah. Yet Israel is indiscriminately carpet bombing and killing hundreds of men, women, and children as we speak. To put things in perspective, Rafah is 25 square miles, and that is about the size of Ward 6 and 7 combined. Ward 6 and 7 has only about 118,000 people. Rafah has over 1.5 million displaced Palestinians. That is about 13 times the amount of people living in Ward 6 and 7. On top of that, no medical care, no food, no water, no electricity, no shelter. Experiencing war myself, I know to an extent what it's like to not have those resources. It's heart-wrenching and dehumanizing. You might think you don't have any power to change what's going on, but your position as leaders in our community and our representatives does have an impact. You have the power to change and influence people's mind by publicly denouncing the killing of innocent Palestinian kids and calling for an immediate ceasefire. It's enough to reassure me as a Muslim, an Arab, and a war survivor born in Bakersfield, not only am I being heard, but supported by my representatives. Also, take it from someone who lived through war. Hearing support from around the world holds a huge significance, more than you think it does. Did you rise in power so you could sit in a comfy chair and have a monthly stipend to decorate your office and take Instagram-worthy photos? Don't you claim to be by the people, for the people. If so, I urge you to call for and pass an immediate ceasefire.
Thank you, Ms. Auda. Next speaker, please.
Samir Abu Daga, followed by Ridi Patel.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself. Can you just raise the mic a little, please? Thank you.
My name is Samir Abu Daga, War II, here to demand that the city council pass a ceasefire resolution to stop the genocide happening in Gaza against Palestinians by the Zionist colonial project that calls itself Israel. I'm going to be very quick with my statement because the genocide against Palestinians is happening as we speak, has been happening for the past 131 days, and we have no longer have time to waste. In my hand is a draft resolution written by concerned Bakersfield citizens that call for a ceasefire and stands with Bakersfield's Palestinian community. Councilwoman Carr, you gave us your thoughts about this genocide at the last meeting, and although the sentiments are there, it does absolutely nothing to address the concerns that we have on paper. It's time for you to stand by your word and introduce this resolution because you will look back on this day years from now and regret it should you choose to not take concrete action. We, as constituents, demand that every single person on this council has their vote taken so that history is able to judge every single one of you for what you did and did not do during this Holocaust. Your kids will learn about this, and it is your decision as to whether they look at you favorably or choose to disown you from their memories. And before I end my statement, I have one simple request for everyone in this room. Raise your hand if you condemn the murder of Palestinian men, women, and children. Raise your hand. For those who did not raise your hand, shame on you. For those that did, it's time for you to introduce a ceasefire resolution because we are done with platitudes and empty talk.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ridi Patel.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Ridi Patel. I, like many of the people behind me, agree that you should introduce a ceasefire resolution. Munbreth, your thoughts and platitudes, while we appreciate you letting us leave public comment, you literally came into this seat so you could do something. We are asking you to introduce a ceasefire resolution. All these people are going to hell. Jenny, Christian, Eric, Ken, Bob, Karen, Andre, Bruce, Patty, they're all going to hell. The Pope has called for a ceasefire, and they aren't able to. They're burning in hell, and we know that. But you have the ability to introduce a ceasefire resolution and stand with us, and we are waiting for you to do that. And we are giving you the ability to salvage some of the character that you might have left, even though you sold your soul and left your current movement to go work for corporate social responsibility for wonderful. Meanwhile, I ask, just like the person behind me, can the community members who support city council, specifically Munbreth, introducing a ceasefire resolution, the ones that we have drafted, to stand? I see the youth commission is also standing. Andre, your little lackeys aren't standing with you anymore. So, I'm just saying that years after years, like this is a culmination point, after you established the rules of decorum because the community members, thousands of community members, wanted a participatory budgeting process, and asking you to divest funds from the pigs at the Bakersfield Police Department to community members so we could have sidewalks, so we could have public transit, so we could have housing, so people aren't left on the streets to starve? You guys don't care about Palestine because you don't care about the people here. And so now we're asking Munbreth, the newest, the most progressive, the one who wants to say the most, to introduce a resolution. And everyone here also wants it.
Ms. Patel, your time is up. Can you bring your comments?
We love her! We love you! We see the clock!
That is not appropriate. You are disrupting the meeting. I ask you to stop. Officers, go ahead and clear. We're going to take a timeout and recess. You are disrupting the meeting. Officers, if you could just close the door, please. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A. One appointment to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee.
This appointment is by Ward, therefore no ballots are required. I'm going to call on Vice Mayor Gonzalez for the Ward 2 nomination of the alternate of the alternate Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee member.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate, recommend, or move the nomination of Sarah Houston to the alternate position representing Ward 2 on the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments, Item B. One appointment at large to the Fire Department Civil Service Board. Applications for appointment were received from Kevin Lee Burton and Louis David.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify the voting process for you. The council will vote electronically, and the city clerk will display and announce the results. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding each appointment. And Madam Clerk, since this is our first time using this system, would you just explain it, please?
Mayor Go, when I open the vote, the council will have an option of two selections, one for each candidate. Once they make their selection, I will close the vote and display and announce to the public.
Thank you.
Mayor, it appears Candidate Burton has received a majority of the votes, with Councilmember Gray abstaining.
Motion to appoint Mr. Burton to the Fire Department Civil Service Board.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Gray voting no.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Burton, for your willingness to serve, and also Ms. Hudson for the KBB Board. Next item, please.
One appointment to Miscellaneous Civil Service Board. One application has been received from Ronald Wolf.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Motion to appoint Mr. Ronald Wolf to the Miscellaneous Civil Service Board.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Consent calendar, Items A, 7A through 7I for approval.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Does any member of the council wish to accuse themselves from any item? Seeing none, does any member wish to pull an item for separate consideration other than 7C1 from Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Weir? Any other items to pull? I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar for every item except for 7C1.
Thank you for the motion. Please catch your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, 7C1. Councilmember Weir, followed by Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we discussed this item at the last meeting. I was adamantly against this, and I remain that way, and I will vote that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Freeman. Can you pull your mic down, too, please?
I had a question, and it's also the only thing I've really had constituents call me on. And I was hoping Mr. Burns would be here. So, Mr. Clegg, you're going to have to pinch-hit for Mr. Burns. In the backup for this program, and I'm in favor of the program, it said we're going to hire two new staff meble to monitor the registry or manage the registry. And first, I'm kind of a stickler for overhead. We keep approving permanent expenditures, adding to our overhead. And I see two new people with payroll burden. That's $150,000, $200,000 a year. My question was, is this just managing the paperwork? Because that seems like too many people. If it said one person for all the paperwork and one to be in the field helping fix up these houses or these buildings, that I could see, because we're going to have more of that. But two people for managing the paperwork, I have a problem with that. And I was wondering, is this maybe not stated properly? Or is that really the intention? Could you help me out here?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Very good question, and a couple answers and a point of clarification is, these are actually two positions that were included in last year's budget. We added several different code employees just to increase our code efforts. But it was in reflection of our overall vacant building toolkit that we've built. We have a few employees that are working specifically on the list of blighted properties on a special projects team. But we also have two additional employees that are going to be assigned to the implementation of this vacant property ordinance. And if I could, I'll try not to belabor it too long, but we actually went up and took a tour of Fresno. They've had a similar ordinance in place. And they communicated to us on that tour that the most success they've had is actually having code officers sit down and work with property owners to find solutions, to get things into a better situation. Compliance is usually the last step. So, these two will actually help fix buildings, work with business owners to find solutions. It's not just the paperwork.
Can I ask a question? Are these two people already here? Were they part of a budget we've hired?
Yes.
We were calling these code enforcement personnel.
Correct.
So, this is part of the code enforcement personnel pool?
Correct.
Which we don't have enough of, I know, and we don't, as a result, lots of codes on the appearance of things that go unfulfilled. So, I'm in agreement with that. But, so, is it a pool where everybody's working on code enforcement? This is just another layer of code enforcement? But it isn't like two people exclusively devoted to the paperwork for this new?
Correct. I will clarify. There will be two people who are assigned to work specifically on this project so that they learn how to work with the businesses. But it is part of the code enforcement pool.
But that's not their exclusive area responsibility. They'll also be doing other code enforcement?
I'll defer to Mr. Boyle to give a little more details.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg. Councilmember Freeman. The special projects team is an assembly of six individuals who work specifically right now on the vacant building ordinance implementation. And I was in a meeting today where that team is currently managing over 200 properties within...
That is our current ordinance that... I understand that. They're working... That ordinance requires we go out and work. And they're not just sitting in the office doing paperwork. They're working on helping with all the vacant buildings. We've already been working on those. We have a committee. We go through them, and I agree with that. I just wanted to be sure that, number one, we didn't hire two new people. It sounds like we don't. We've already had them in a budget as code enforcers. And the two of those people will be specialists in the registry, but also doing code enforcement, general code enforcement? Or are they simply going to work on the paperwork for this registry? Chase down people? Are they signed up and stuff?
In addition to working on the registry itself and having that as a focal point within their job responsibilities, they'll also be working with special projects as relates to the...
I just really want to hear the special projects part, that they are really going out and helping fix up these derelict buildings as well as keeping the registry up to date and doing this. You know, where do you spend their time? Chasing down more people to register or fixing a building? And I know... I'm glad to hear we're not hiring more than we already have. And I just couldn't see I'd take two people full-time just to do the paperwork to chase down people registering or not registering. I know there's a culling of the list and everything, but especially since we started with a restricted zone, which will probably keep us busy for a number of years. Okay, well, with that explanation, I'm satisfied.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Gray? Okay, I just see Councilmember Gray's now.
Thank you, Mayor Go. I'm going to have to stand with Councilmember Weir on this. I've talked about it before, the last time it was brought up. I don't think that this is going to help the bad actors. They're already a bad actor, a lot of them. Why are they going to take time to register when they're not even following code as it is? And now we're hiring two more people, which is fine, it's in the budget. But we hired those... We put those people in the budget originally because there's other code issues that we're trying to catch up on, that we needed help with. And now we're diverting that manpower again to another regulation that just adds layers and layers. So, for that reason, I cannot see where this is going to do the city any good. That's going to... We're going to progress. I think we just need to hire those two code officers and start taking care of those bad actors. So, with that, I'm going to have to vote against.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, I've represented downtown now for nearly eight years. And we've systematically gone through a series of different projects and programs and outreach events and policy change in order to continuously support the revitalization of the core, including supporting business owners and property owners through grant programs like our Economic Opportunity Area Program. I want to note that we have granted out almost close to $1 million this year for business owners and property owners in order to help revitalize the downtown. So, there are a lot of folks out there who are, in fact, good actors. But there are some bad actors out there. And there's some actors who are just sort of benign, who aren't necessarily paying attention to their properties. They're out-of-town property owners who have seen their property as a sort of an investment to just sit on and really have not done the proper maintenance and repair and taken care of their property and haven't been very good neighbors. And this is a way for us... This is just one more tool for us to continuously improve the condition of our downtown. It's absolutely important that we take this step. Speaking with dozens and dozens of business owners and property owners, there's a lot of support in the downtown area for this particular policy, and people are eager to see it implemented if for nothing else but for a simple posting on each building that identifies who is responsible 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the proper maintenance and care for that building. And I think that's important for all of these good actors and these folks who are really investing in our urban core, in our downtown, to be able to know who they can call on when there's an issue. So, with that, I'm going to move adoption of the ordinance.
Mayor Go, I just... Is it okay?
Councilmember Gray.
I totally agree with you, Andre, that we need to get the downtown cleaned up. I went down there last week for dinner. Mama Mia's had a wonderful time. And we need to get it cleaned up, and it's definitely working towards that. So, I don't disagree with what you're saying in that regard at all. But I don't understand why... You're talking about these buildings are going to be posted. Why do we have to create another two jobs? Or maybe one, at least, when we already know how to find the owners of those buildings and then start enforcing the code that we have rather than create another layer on top of this thing? When common sense tells me, if they haven't called in to let you know, hey, I got an abandoned building, you say a lot of them are out of town, that type of thing, they're not even going to know about this registry situation. And so, I'm just bringing this up because sometimes I think government... We just need to apply some common sense to government and not always apply regulation. And I think in this case, this is a really good case for that, that we can get a hold of these property owners that have lost interest and be able to post who's responsible and start holding their feet to the fire using the code officers that we're going to be hiring and the ones that we have. So, with that, I appreciate... Respectfully, I submit my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmembers Weir and Gray voting no.
Thank you. And next item, please. Madam Clerk.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Gray.
Thank you. I was... We have been supporters of Tunnel to Towers for years now, my husband and I. And I'd like to bring forth a referral tonight. I was watching their commercial, and they have... And then I did my research on it. They have now begun a program called Veterans Villages. And they have National Case Management Network that they are going all over the United States and putting in villages for homeless vets with private money to be able to not only house them, but also give them all the services they need to help them, you know, get back into our society because they have given so much to this country. And I was just so impressed with it. It says that through the Veterans Villages and Case Management Network, the Tunnel to Towers Foundation is responsible for providing housing assistance and access to supportive services to over 3,300 veterans in 2023, with nearly 4,000 veterans assisted since the program's inception. Tunnel to Towers ensures that our veterans have a place to live with comfort, dignity, and hope as they work towards financial stability and independence. Their commitment ensures that no veteran is left behind. And they actually have a village in West LA that... On a 388-acre property. And they have worked... It's a campus for over 3,000 veterans in LA. Well, I got to thinking, I mean, I don't think there's any city in the entire state of California that's more patriotic than the city of Bakersfield. We treat our vets here with such dignity and are continually lifting them up. We have all these memorials all over our city. I mean, it's a very, very important part of our makeup here, our character as a city. So, I would like to refer to staff. If you would provide an analysis for us of how we can partner with Tunnel to Towers to bring affordable housing to our veterans in Bakersfield. I think it's another great way for us to be able to engage the community. And I think our community would get behind this with, you know, 100%. So, I could make that referral tonight. And happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Now that we adopted the vacant property registry, I'd like us to continue our quest to really build up our chronic nuisance property toolkit and develop our lien forgiveness program for property owners, new property owners who acquire properties that once have had a number of liens. And I'd like to refer that over to our Planning and Development Committee. And then, number two is, I received word... I'm not quite sure what the validity is to this. But I would like to ask staff to research this and to work with the county of Kern. But I received word that people who are released... of Kern, but I received word that people who are released from our county jail are actually released in Bakersfield when they're not necessarily from Bakersfield. They may be from outlying areas throughout the county. I'd like us to research that and see if there's any merit to that, and work with the county to establish a better program so that we ensure that all those folks who are released from the county jail are returned to their home community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple items. Number one, we had a planning and development committee this week, and we had a consultant look at our downtown housing capacity and our goal of 10,000 residents, and one of the main recommendations was that we allow the CB zone to be more transparent, was a term they used, but it seems to me that if we just would allow residential on that by right instead of with the conditional use permit, then that would move towards our goal, and since we're looking at our zoning ordinance now, I'd like to look at putting that in the zoning ordinance. Number two is bonding numbers when we record subdivision map. Councilmember Freeman called me last week, and I also received a call from constituents. We have historically, and I, you know, longer than I've been here, so 60, 70 years probably, used county bonding numbers for our recording of subdivision maps. And maybe that made sense when we were a town of 10,000 or 20,000, but it seems to me we could come up with our own bonding numbers now. The county, you know, they're doing paving work out in the desert and rural places, you know, trucking costs are a lot higher, and we bid stuff out all the time, we build stuff all the time. I think we could get much more reasonable numbers if we came up with our own bonding numbers. The example that he gave was, and there's various problems with it, but number one is we charge plan check and inspection fees based on the bonding numbers, and when the bonding numbers changed, the plan check and inspection for a 40-acre subdivision went up $60,000. No more work for the plan checkers or inspectors, but we're charging considerably more money, and I would like for us to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I don't see any other requests to speak, so with that, we're adjourned at 6:43. Happy Valentine's Day.